Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, May 9th, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room at Courthouse Square here in Salem, Oregon. We begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance, and would you join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How could you be in a bad mood when you do that?
So, we're going to do things a little bit differently this morning than usual. We have a Brooks Community Service District meeting that was noticed in the newspaper, right, at 9:00 AM, and so we're making sure that we have it at 9:00 AM. So, we're going to take off our hats as the Marion County Board of Commissioners recess our regularly scheduled board meeting and open a meeting of the Brooks Community Service District, and the Commissioners serve as the board of that special district. So, it is Wednesday, 9:00 AM, May 9th, and we are in the Senator hearing room. The attendance is the three Commissioners, and we will open a public hearing to consider the Brooks sewer rate studies. So, we have Matt and Dennis are here. If you'd introduce yourselves and tell the board what it is that we are considering today.
Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate your time today. For the record, my name is Dennis Mansfield. I'm the Budget Officer for the Brooks Community Service District, and with me is Matt Knudsen. Matt, for the record, can you please introduce yourself?
Matt Knudsen, Brooks Operations Supervisor.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you again, Commissioners, for your time. We're here today to discuss the Brooks Community Service District sewer rates. Before we get started, I'd like to present for the record our timeline of meetings and notices in regards to the Brooks sewer rates. A special meeting was held on February 26th, 2018 with the governing body. All required notifications were sent out for this meeting. It was from this meeting that the governing body requested a public hearing. For the public hearing, we sent out several notices. A notice went out on March 19th to all Brooks sewer customers with their regular sewer invoices. A second notice went out on April 24th to all Brooks sewer customers and property owners, if different. On April 25th, there were several notices posted, including a notice in the Statesman's Journal, various digital media outlets, the Public Works News and Events webpage, the service district's webpage, and it was posted in the lobby of Public Works. On April 27th, a notice was posted in the Kaiser Times. On May 1st, a second notice was posted in the Statesman's Journal, and lastly, we posted a notice on the Public Works Facebook page on May 3rd. Matt is going to go over some important operational information that will help paint the picture of what we're seeing out in the district, and I will follow up with fiscal information and a few options. With that, I will turn it over to Matt.
Thanks, Dennis. The Brooks Community Service District was constructed and came online in 1992. The system serves over 200 residential, commercial, and industrial customers. On the map shown in the PowerPoint presentation, components are noted. We have, in green, we have over 200 tanks. We have main lines that go to the Willamette and the Influent Main Lines going to our treatment lagoons. Brooks Operations has experienced significant turnover during the last year. We went from having over 35 years of combined Brooks system experience to a little over a year at this point. The new operators we have are very experienced in wastewater operations and have taken significant effort to evaluate the system and understand its conditions. The type of system we operate in Brooks is called a septic tank effluent pumping system, or abbreviated STEP system. STEP systems are fairly unique because they have septic tanks serving customers on private property. The tanks are equipped with pumps. The pumps pump the effluent to the pressure main line, and the pressure main line ends up discharging at our treatment lagoons. The setup for the septic tank portion of the system can be simple with one tank to more complicated like this one, which has 16 separate tanks. Each unique setup requires maintenance to keep functioning on-site. As a result of our operators taking a look at the system and its components, we've observed an overall lack of preventative maintenance. This is a picture of a several-year-old root wad that grew into a septic tank through the manhole, which is about 18 inches in diameter. Took two people to cut and remove it. It's imperative that we run a proactive maintenance program. Systems like ours work like a chain. If one link is weak or broken, the chain will break, and large portions of the system will be affected. Our STEP system is now 26 years old. It has over 1,000 working components, all with various lifespans, and it's imperative for the system performance that they are working. These sections of pipe are parts of the influent main line that have worn with age. This will continue to occur at a more frequent rate. This is a top view of a septic tank pumping system. Each pumping tank, we have over 200, has a pump or two, screens, multiple floats, and electrical control panel. Each of these components need to be maintained or replaced with time. An example of newer efficiencies and improved customer service is related to the screens. In the top-right corner, you can see an older-style screen. When these plug, we have to remove the pumps and floats just to access the screen. When clearing the screen, we need to pull it out and hose it off, and this can be off-putting to customers, for which the process takes a few hours, and we're hosing it off, the effluent back into the tanks in their yards. The new, more customer-service-friendly approach is captured in the bottom-left image with the newer-style filter. This allows our operators to pull a filter and replace it with a new filter within just a few minutes. Our lagoons collect all the wastewater from the system. They were designed for 256,000 gallons per day of dry weather effluent. We currently only receive a little over 50,000 gallons per day. We have capacity in Brooks for continued growth. As with the rest of the system, the lagoons, operators building, sampling equipment, and larger pumps are aging, and replacements are necessary. As the system ages, I will reiterate that it is imperative we are operating in a proactive manner. STEP systems are active systems, meaning each component plays a vital role in ensuring the system runs effectively. System components need to be maintained and/or replaced to prevent large system failure. With that, I'll reintroduce Dennis Mansfield to discuss the financial aspects.
Thanks, Matt. Something that's working against us right now is our recorded flow coming into the system from our customers. The system was built intentionally for growth, but Brooks is not seeing the growth that was anticipated. With growth comes more customers and additional revenues to pay for the replacement of the infrastructure. However, as this slide illustrates, we are seeing a decrease in what is being billed to our customers. These billings are based on meter readings at each of our customers' locations. You will note the term EDU. An EDU is an equivalent dwelling unit, which is based on usage, currently set at 135 gallons per day. A customer is charged at least one EDU per month or more if the customer uses more than 135 gallons per day on average. As you can see, just five years ago, we were charging 583 EDUs per month, and today, we are charging 418 EDUs per month, a 29% decrease. As Matt mentioned, we've got new eyes on the system operationally. We've also got new eyes on the fiscal side of the system as well. We have an analyst who has conducted a rate analysis, which you'll find in your packet. A key component of what they worked on is looking at our replacement costs of the system. As mentioned, we have an aging system with a number of parts and equipment that require replacement at some point in time. As this slide illustrates, in today's dollars, we should either be spending or saving approximately $55,000 per year in replacement parts and equipment. Taking this information, this next slide shows a history of what we've been spending on replacement parts and equipment versus the linear line of what we should be spending or saving per year. It's important to note that while it's okay to have a year that we don't spend the money, it's necessary to save those funds, as it's not a matter of if these components need to be replaced, it's just a matter of when. The gap between the two should represent what we are saving, and the slide illustrates where we should be in terms of savings for these parts at approximately $549,000. Where we stand today is less than half of that. This slide represents Brooks' networking capital from fiscal year 1213 through a forecast of fiscal year 2728. As you can see, without a rate adjustment, the sewer district will be out of money by fiscal year 2122, and we are widening the gap between what we need to be reserving or spending on replacement parts and equipment. Go into some history with some of our sewer rates. Brooks sewer rates has not changed since 2004. Here's the history of what the rates were. You'll see some increases in the mid-'90s and two increases in early 2000s, 2003, and our last increase, 2004, but nothing since. Comparing to other areas of similar systems and sizes around us, so other STEP systems, we have four of them around us. You'll notice that Brooks is at $27 per EDU, and it goes all the way up to $85. Donald is also in there, which is just north of us, at $35.14. I have an asterisk there to note that the city of Donald is currently on an annual CPI increase with rates anticipated to be over $38 by 2021. Some other nearby locations, just to get a kind of an idea of what other areas are charging, Canby, Mount Angel, Woodburn, all in the mid-'40s, and the city of Salem is just under 50. In 2014, the League of Oregon Cities conducted a wastewater rate survey, and you'll notice there that it's in order of rate, and Brooke is near the bottom at $27. And there's various cities that are throughout, basically around the same population size. We are also one of the last to have a rate increase. Most customers have had a rate increase in the 2014 timeframe. Just also to note, this was four years ago that this last study was completed, so rates have definitely changed since then for other areas. With that, I'd like to go over a few options. As we go through this, I would like to note that the forecast model represents zero-volume growth. Option 1 is what I would consider aggressive, but it quickly rightsizes the rate structure for the foreseeable future by incrementally increasing the sewer rate over the next year by $27.50 per EDU. There would be an increase every six months, starting in July 2018, with the last increase being July 2019. Additionally, and with all the options I will present, we are increasing the planned replacement expenditures, $10,000 per year for the next six years. The result brings our networking capital up quickly and lessens the gap between our savings and required reserve balance. Option 2 is less aggressive, but requires the rate to end a little higher than the first option by incrementally increasing the sewer rate over the next five years by $30 per EDU. The result is we remain on the lower end of our networking capital for a longer period of time, which poses a risk if there's a significant repair needed during this time, and it takes longer to decrease the gap between our savings and required reserve balance. Option 3 is a little more aggressive than Option 2, but less aggressive than Option 1, and adds a CPI component. The incremental increase is $7.50 per EDU for the next four years, with the CPI increase starting in July of 2022. The CPI used for this forecast model is 2%. This results in some risk for the first few fiscal years if there is a significant repair needed, but adding the CPI per year significantly decreases the gap between our savings and required reserve balance. This next slide is just a summary of the options and rate structures that I just presented. Option 1 is a one-year rate increase that incrementally increases the rate at six-month intervals. Option 2 stretches the increases out over five years, and Option 3 increases the rate over a four-year time period with an annual CPI increase to follow. As with any fiscal models, forecasting is based on certain constants and known changes. It's difficult to say exactly where the Brooks Sewer District will be in 10 years, but what I can say with certainty is that today, we have eyes on the system, both operationally and fiscally. While these options include several rate increases over time, this does not mean we disappear and come back in five years. We will review, update, and present our user rate analysis annually with you, the governing body. In other words, the governing body will continue to be provided the necessary information to make informed decisions and the ability to make changes to the rate structure as it deems necessary at any given time to maintain a healthy sewer system, while ensuring the customers of Brooks Community Service District receives a valuable service. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, you have anything you're going to present, or are you here for questions?
No, my presentation's finished at this point.
What's that?
I'll answer questions.
You'll answer questions? Great. Okay. So, are there questions?
Well, yes, if I could, I'll just get them on the table. First of all, I make a thought that 14 years is too long ago without adjusting, and you head for trouble. But just a little, when you're first, I forget which one of you did it, talking about EDUs going down or the usage. Does that indicate other problems in the system, individual leakage, something else going on, and is there plans to deal with that if there is a problem?
Yeah, so what it shows is that our pumps, so our pumps basically are turning on and off, and what we're overall seeing is our usage is remaining constant, but our EDUs are going down. So, what we're getting at the lagoons is actually kind of, has kind of tapered off and has remained constant. So, there are a couple of issues there. You could, with what we're experiencing, you could have meter reading, meter issues where it's not turning over appropriately, and we have to replace those parts. That is a part of what we're taking a look at. And then there's also other engineering issues that we have to take a look at as well.
And then the last I had, I don't know really how to evaluate the options. Is there a preferred favorite you'd like us to look at?
A preferred, I would, yeah, I would say if I were to make a recommendation of the three, I would go with Option 3.
Option 3. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matt, probably along the lines of Commissioner's question, I guess my concern is that there's been a lot of growth business-wise there, and yet the effluent that's coming out, as what you just said, is less than what it was, I mean, looking at the chart, than where it was. So, you just talked about reasons that may happen, and I'm thinking of places like the city of Salem. I think they measure sewer by water intake. I mean, that's how they bill, right? Because I remember having a commercial property that they used, they used a winter water rate to fix the sewer rate, right?
Correct. Yeah, so the city of Salem also operates their, the water utility, and in Brooks, we operate a very small water utility, not serving all of the 200-plus customers.
So, you can't?
So, there isn't a way to read based off of incoming water.
So, these STEP systems throughout that we're comparing ourselves to, do they all measure effluent coming out? Is that what the meter is measuring in all these systems?
It's measured in various, in a lot of different ways. You can do it the way we're doing it.
Which is what?
Which is based off of pump cycles. So, when the pump's running, we can calculate, we can calculate the gallons per minute and thus extrapolate how much usage the customer actually is using. So, in that given time period, we'd look at how many pump cycles and the gallons per that pump cycle.
So, is there actually a meter on each one of those pipes coming out, like when you saw 16 tanks? So, you've got 16 pipes coming out to a bigger pipe, obviously, and there's a meter on that master pipe? Is that?
On the, so for most scenarios that we have within the system, what we're actually reading is, it's not the actual fluid going through the pipe, it's the hours that the pump is running and whatever that pump is designed for. So, if it's 10 gallons a minute and you're running for a minute, that's 10 gallons. So, over the period of time that we're reading, we're taking the number of hours and multiplying that by the gallons per minute.
Okay, so it's actually not measuring water effluent coming out, it's actually measuring time a pump runs, and you've got a calculation on each pump?
Exactly. We run, for most residential customers, we run 10 gallons a minute, and for commercials, we're running 20 gallons a minute pumps.
Okay. Sounds a little complicated.
Well, it sounds like the pump better be
Right.
Constant and working.
Yes.
If the pumps are failing, then we're not
Gauging, right.
Exactly. Yeah, so that's, so what we, what we take a look at on a, every time, every time we do meter reading, we take a look at how the pumps are operating. You can extrapolate based off the data, how the pumps are operating, and if pumps are running inefficiently, you can get that from the data, and then, and then we can go and replace those pumps.
So, one more. This is interesting. So, we also know how often trucks are coming in to pump those septic tanks, right? And the total gallons they're pumping out on, I don't know what those tanks are, and residential's usually about 1,000 gallon, right?
Correct.
So, is there, do you have any data that shows how much, how much gallons we've been pumping over the years versus in the history that shows that that's going up, or do you have that information?
We don't have information that says we're having to pump on a more frequent schedule. We keep, so the, inside the tanks, what we're pumping is the sludge. We don't have that, the good thing about a STEP system is that the sludge isn't building up at the lagoons, it's actually building up inside the tanks
Right.
So, we're able to pump the tanks. And what we do throughout the year is, we do essentially sludge testing to see how, if the tank actually needs to be pumped. And so, what we do at the end of the year is if a specific tank has considerably higher usage, then we're able to determine that that needs pumping more frequently.
But we're paying some septic company to come out and haul this stuff away. We don't have records of how much we've been hauling away every year and comparing that?
We do. We do, and we do compare it, we do compare it for use, so we can extrapolate if a customer needs pumping more often.
It'd be interesting to have that number of how much effluent, or I mean, how much sludge we've been pumping. Has that gone up? Why effluent's gone down? You know what I'm saying here?
I agree, and we can build that, build that dataset. The, there doesn't necessarily have to be a correlation between the amount that you're pumping or the frequency that you're pumping and the overall usage, just because you might have more water usage that doesn't actually build up sludge in the actual tank. For a residential customer, that might be more accurate than a commercial customer.
Okay. Just be, it'd be interesting to have that number to compare, because if that's gone up and effluent's gone down, then we have system issues, right?
Exactly. Yeah, it helps build a
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to drag this on, but what do we need to do here?
Well, we need to
Get some sludge out.
We need to have our public hearing, so we're going, we have a couple people signed up. Any other questions before we do that? And my agenda says I'm supposed to do testimony and support and then an opposition, but people didn't list what they were, so I think I'll just call them up. Is that all right with you? So, Terry Belkey, is Terry here? Do you want to come over to this other stand here? And I would ask you to state your name and the community you live in, and make sure you pull the microphone real close, because we need to pick it up for the TV cameras.
I'm Terry Belkey. I live at
Thank you.
On Quinn Street in Brooks. I live just outside of the sewer district, but I have a farm, 25-acre farm within the sewer district, which has two houses on it. And one thing I noticed is, for the homes, your usage was pretty stable, but the industrial use was way down. So, actually, the homes were pretty stable for use, from what I noticed on the slides. So, I don't know which industrial company, businesses went away, but, because it's gone down quite a bit. So, one thing you haven't taken into account is, there've been approved 70 more homes in Bethel Park, and I'm not sure the timeline, when those will come online, but that will increase your income quite a bit, and it looks like your ponds are already big enough. So, one question I have is, when those 70 homes come on, will they pay their own way? Will they pay for all their equipment, main line, infrastructure for building the pond, or will current rate payers be subsidizing that, those 70 homes? So, that's a couple of my questions. So, I think we know, I don't know the timeline of the 70 homes that have been approved, but that'll change your scenario quite a bit, because that'll be a third more income for you.
So, why don't we just ask really quick? So, do your calculations anticipate any growth in terms of development, or is it a static in terms of the payers that are there right now?
We did not forecast any volume growth within the Brooks community.
Okay.
But to answer his questions, I think Matt would be better suited for how the customers, when they get set up.
Yeah, when a customer is developing a site, they're required to install the septic tank and all the equipment at their costs, and then any improvements that would need to be made to the service line, so the service laterals. So, the customer is required to pay that, and it isn't spread out to all the other rate payers.
So, will the 70 new homes, will they pay for any of the infrastructure costs from building the ponds originally?
From building the original ponds?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't believe that's in our calculations.
No. Those ponds have been paid for.
So, the current customers paid for the ponds, and the new 70 homes are going to get a free ride?
Okay, so generally, we don't even allow with testimony for questions to be answered, so I don't want to get into a debate here with staff, all right? So, if you have technical questions that need to be answered, I'm happy to have them do it, just because I'm interested in the answers, too.
Right.
But I really don't want to get into kind of an argument type of discussion here. So, did you have other points that you wanted to make in your testimony?
Is the monthly rate for houses, is that fixed, or is it on a volume basis?
It's on a volume basis.
Okay, so the $27 a month is average?
Yeah, it's on an average of a usage of 135 gallons per day.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board for Mr. Belkey?
No, I got questions, though, for staff.
All right. We've got one more person signed up. Doug Delano?
Right here, right. I don't have any other comments.
All right. Great. Thank you. Is there anyone who didn't have a chance to sign up that would like to testify that came to the hearing? All right, so questions from the board?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and I think we've, I think I brought this up before, Dennis. I think, is it Belkein? Is that?
Belkey.
Belkey. Mr. Belkey brought up an interesting point. System development charges. Do we have any system development charges for people to hook up to the system?
We do not.
What would it take to do that?
That's a good question. I'm not familiar with system development charges and how they are put together, so I don't have any experience with that, but it is something that we are definitely going to look at in this next year.
That'd be great. I would love the staff to look into that, because I think that's a good point about, I mean, a lot of jurisdictions have system development charges, which helps our infrastructure, and I know we do it with other things, roads, or require people to do certain things when we ask them to do development. So, that'd be good to have something to come back with that we could, I'd like to take a look at. I don't know about my peers. And then I just wanted to clarify that the EDU of 135 gallons that we charge by is a system-wide STEP system standard that we're comparing to in all these other jurisdictions, correct?
Not necessarily. This was actually, that 135 was created back when the system was built, and it's based on population and average residential size, and then the anticipated flow. And so, they set that back in the early '90s, and it was set at 135 gallons per minute, and we've kept it at that.
So, I'm going to go back to page, well, there's not a page number, but the sewer rates continued. So, when we say the rate, when we look at Brooks, number 17, is $27, that's based on our 135-gallon EDU, right? But when you look at someplace else where it says St. Paul at the top, what's their $70 based on?
I'm uncertain of that, but it's a flat rate, so that they just charge any residential customer $70 regardless of their usage.
So, okay, so going back to Brooks, if I have a residential customer, am I only paying $27 as a flat rate?
No, it's based, it's on volume. It's based, so if
Right, so what, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what would be, what I'm not understanding, to do apples to apples, what would be an average customer's monthly bill?
An average residential customer's bill is Um, an average residential customer's bill is probably around $34 a month, um, depending, um, but there's many residuals that are at 27.
Right, I'm just trying to understand, how many EDUs does a person generally use in a month?
The average residential customer usage in Brooks right now is a little over 180 gallons per month. Or, I'm sorry, sorry, 180 gallons per day.
Which translates into?
So, um, about the $34 per month.
All right.
Okay. So, so I just wanted to make a point that the sewer rates are not apples to apples that we're looking at. We'd have to actually-
That'd be correct.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I was-
No, no, I-
Trying to figure out the same thing you were trying to figure out, I wasn't hearing the answers.
I'm sure, I just think when there's a survey, we ought to be comparing apples to apples and, and the point is it's not. And so it'd be good to have that.
Right.
What the average residential customer's paying in these particular places, um, versus what our residential, so we're, we're at $34, we're not, we would be, we would be up a couple of notches. No, we'd still be, we'd still be below, I mean, we'd still be 15 or 16. Okay, got it, thank you.
So one of the concerns I have, given the testimony, is future growth, which will add income, but will also add infrastructure cost, right? And so we haven't factored in the co- that cost or the potential income from that.
Correct.
So is there any way, today we were not planning to act on this, right? We're just planning to close the public hearing. Can you go back before we have the next discussion and, uh, check with whoever's gonna be involved with that development and find out what the prognosis is in terms of how, you know, is it a concept? Is it shovel-ready or, you know, what's gonna happen with it? And, uh, maybe factor some of that into the-
Okay.
-that discussion? So maybe we have a 3A or something like that-
Okay.
-when you come back?
Uh, so Madam Chair, I want to thank Dennis and Matt for the work you do and, and the numbers you crunch out all the time. I really appreciate the, the data you give us to help make decisions, so I appreciate it. Appreciate the testimony from our citizens today too.
Right, yeah, I appreciate people that came down. And thank you for getting the word out as broadly as you did. You know, it's always a concern of mine that we have these public hearings and that, uh, no one really knows we're having them. And then we say, oh, well, everybody must be fine with it because we didn't hear from anyone, so it's, uh, I, I think you did a very thorough job of getting that information out, I want to thank, uh, the people that I know were involved in making that happen, so. All right, so anything else, uh, for the good of the order, for the Brooks Community Sewer District?
Well, I'd like to understand what the future on the issue will be. So will we come back and they, we just make a decision, we haven't even chosen an option?
Well, I think-
We just want some more information, then we'll act on it then, when we know.
So I think you were planning to come back in a meeting when?
Next week, next Tuesday.
Next week, all right. So next week, you're gonna come back and we're gonna, to this meeting?
Uh, no, we have our, uh, regularly scheduled budget meeting on the 12th. We're gonna have it there on Tuesday.
That's right, I've seen it in the newspaper. So what date is that again, so people?
I believe that's the Tuesday, the-
It's May 15th, if I recall correctly.
May 15th, 10 a.m. And we're upstairs in the Silverton Conference.
Yes.
All right, so if anyone's interested in participating in that, uh, that's when we will look at any revisions to the calculations based on what we heard here today and, uh, and we will take action.
And, and I read very clearly, it was brought up, I want to know what the average, uh, monthly rate is, not, not numbers that don't compare. So we make sure we're in line. And the discussion of projected growth, and that, that's been brought up. I think that's what we're looking for.
Right.
As far as the SDC is just, it, these apparently are already approved lots, so you, you wouldn't be able to impose new charges on them, but we should look at this district and all of them in terms of where we need to be for the future on any SDCs.
Well, I don't know that, that's a fact. I, I don't know, but if, whatever, we, we need to investigate that and see what we can do.
All right.
If we can't, then fine, but for the future going forward, we certainly need to look at it. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, do we need a motion to close the public hearing? Or do I just do that?
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing in the Brooks Sewer District.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 The public hearing is closed.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And we will also close the meeting of the Brooks Community-
Service District.
-Service District. I want to make sure I got that all right. All right, so now we will resume our meeting of the Marion County Board of Commissioners. Uh, we had no one signed up under public comment, and we have a pu- couple of public hearings noticed under the board, so we'll be taking testimony on, on those items, uh, when we get to them. But anyone that came just to talk about something other than the public hearings or items on the agenda? Okay, so then we'll move to our consent agenda, and I can't remember whose turn it is.
It's gonna be me. Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning of two items. Under Public Works, approve amendment number one of the contract for services with Lane Force Products Incorporated to add $27,700 for grinding of yard debris at Brown's Island Demolition Landfill. Also, under Public Works, receive notice of a hearings officer decision approving conditional use case 18004, could be Sewless Solar, 25 LLC on property owned by Dennis Clark.
I think it is. I'll second the motion.
And a motion and a second to approve those two items? Any comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
You want to say something and you're not going to, is that right?
No, I'm not.
Okay, all right, fine.
No, I know you're not.
Action items, all right. We have three proclamations today under action. This is the month of proclamations. I swear, we had, how many last week? Three, I think?
I added one.
Right. Four. So the first is under Board of Commissioners, consider approval of a proclamation recognizing May 2018 as Older Americans Month in Marion County. We have Ruth McEwen and Judy Richards, Chuck Richards, uh, from the Northwest Senior and Disability Services Advisory Council. Are you, and if you would come over to this table here, unless you have a PowerPoint presentation, the camera picks you up better there, not quite as on top of your head.
If I could, Madam Chair, these people, I've worked as representing the Board of Northwest Seniors and Disabilities, but these people do a lot, almost full-time, in, uh, promoting the welfare and needs of seniors, and appreciate them very much.
Good morning. So, uh, thank you for being here today and tell us about Older Americans Month.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners, for seeing us today. My name is Judy Richards and I am on the advisory board at Northwest Senior and Disability Services.
I am Ruth McEwen. I chair the senior council for the Northwest Senior and Disability Services.
I'm Chuck Richards and I'm on the senior advisory for Northwest Senior Services.
As you can see, we represent seniors and people with disabilities in our counties, and we are very proud of the work that we do do, and we thank you for your support. Uh, today, we're here to talk to you about the Older Americans Month that we would like to have, um, uh, your support on. Across the country, older Americans are rapidly a growing population. And they are taking part of activities and promote wellness and social connection. They are sharing their wisdom and their experience with future generations, and they're giving back to make and, and enrich their communities. They're working and volunteering, we're mentoring and learning, and we are leading and engaging, and I think that's an extremely part of, important part of our communities today. For 55 years, Older American Month, or we say OAM, has been observed to recognize the older Americans and their contributions to the communities. Led by the administration of Community Living Administration on Aging, every May offers opportunity to hear from, support, and celebrate our nation's elders. This year, OAM theme is engage at every age. Emphasizes the importance of being active, involved, no matter where or where you are in your life. When you are never too old and you're never too young, to participate in activities that can enrich your physical, mental, and emotional well-being. It is becoming more apparent that a remaining socially engaged can improve the quality of life for older Americans. Northwest Senior and Disability Services will use OAM 2018 to focus on how older adults in our area are engaging with friends and family through various community activities. Northwest Senior and Disabilities will be promoting activities and events for OAM through a press release, social media campaign, community outreach, proclamations from its advisory councils. And therefore, we invite you to join us by issuing this proclamation in Marion County to emphasize the value older adults bring to this community and to highlight the importance of remaining engaged regardless of what your age is. We feel that this is something that our community is very engaged in, and we're very proud of Marion County for what they do. We're asking for your support for bringing the proclamation for the older Americans in this community for the month of May.
Thank you. Ruth, did you have anything to add or Chuck? No? All right, very good. Questions, comments?
Well, you know, I've kind of slipped into older age, so suddenly it's a lot-
I was just, I was just wondering if we should declare a conflict of interest before we do this.
I never thought of that.
Right. Well, I'm retiring at the end of this year, so.
Well, there you are.
And I'm a Grammy, so.
So let's, we better support this.
Yeah, we've got to support it.
All right.
And I was just gonna say, I do, I, I used to, when all the commissioners served on the Board of Northwest, uh, what, Senior and Disability Services, which it wasn't called when I was on the Board, that's why I have to hesitate. Uh, I obviously served on the Board then, and then when we changed the structure of it, Commissioner Brantano has been serving, but I continue to serve on the Budget Committee and really enjoy the opportunity to get updated on that and served on several committees about seniors when I was in the legislature, which seems like a really long time ago now, but, uh, I thank you for bringing this forward. And certainly, I mean, it, just your comments, all of a sudden, made me think about our culture and how we're almost justifying the worth of people who are older Americans, where in other cultures, people who are older are esteemed by the younger generation for their wisdom and what they bring and, uh, and certainly-
Is that gonna start pretty soon?
Well, it's got, I'm, I'm making it happen, I'll tell you, in my realm, so, anyway, so it'll be, uh, interesting, but, uh, thank you very much for bringing that forward.
So do we have a motion?
Well, I, I just want to say thank you. It's been a while since I've seen y'all. I used to see you all the time and, and appreciate your service and what you do to, uh, promote the well-being and, and the lifestyles of, of the seniors in our community and your service for doing that. It's been great to see you. So, Madam Chair, I will make a motion, uh, that we approve a proclamation recognizing May 2018 as Older Americans Month in Marion County.
I'll second the motion, just one little comment. You used to see them at the legislature and they're still actively promoting-
Right.
-senior, uh, subjects there.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you second the motion?
Yeah, he did.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All in favor, say aye.
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 And it's approved, and we're gonna read the proclamation, and then we have an extra copy, if you'd like to take it with you. Would that be, we can sign it and take it to, and you can take it back to the, uh, maybe the Senior Disability Services Office or wherever you want to do that. All right, so let's see. Commissioner Brantano, since you're on the Board, why don't you start?
Thank you. In a matter of recognizing May 2018 as Older Americans Month in Marion County, a proclamation, whereas Marion County includes countless older Americans who enrich, enrich and strengthen our community, and whereas Marion County is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, and?
Oh, I wasn't, oh, there we go. Whereas, we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical and mental and emotional well-being, no matter your age, and whereas Marion County can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community planning, events, and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor.
Now, therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2018 as Older Americans Month. We urge residents to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community. Thank you. And Sam is signing. Sign next. Pass that down to Kristy and she'll make sure that you get the comments.
Thank you very much. In closing, I just want to thank the Commissioners for their support of this proclamation, and also add just a note that, um, one of our other members, who would have been here today, Ken Hetzel, who I know you know-
Yes.
-uh, is in the hospital, and, um, we send him well wishes, and, you know, this was a big part of what he wanted to do.
Great, thank you for telling us that.
Thank you for today.
Yeah, Ms. Kim.
Okay, next up is the Sheriff's Office has two proclamations. The first one is to consider approval of a proclamation designating May 6th through 12th, 2018 as Corrections Professionals and Nurses Appreciation Week in Marion County. And we have Sheriff Jason Myers, under Sheriff Troy Clausen, and Commander, oh, we don't have Troy, do we have Troy Clausen? Yes, we do, all right.
He's here, but we have the commanders up here with me.
Commander Ted Larson and Eric Ladd, we have, uh, all right, however you want to do this. I'll just turn it over to you, Sheriff.
We're throwing you a curveball, but you're usually pretty good at hitting it. So, um, we're gonna actually do two proclamations at the same time.
Okay.
And, um, the first one is, uh, for Corrections Professionals and Nurse Appreciation Week. And then the second one is for, uh, National Police Recognition Week. And I'm gonna have both of the commanders, uh, talk about their specific disciplines and the great work that our, uh, Sheriff's Office employees do to keep our community safe throughout the year.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for allowing us a few minutes this morning to talk about the appreciation weeks that we're faced with this week and next. I want to start with our, uh, Nurse Appreciation Week at the jail. Our medical team is made up of registered nurses, office specialists, and our partners from the Health Department with our mental health specialists. And last year, we saw over 16,000 bookings, and that medical team was responsible for their care and custody while they stayed with us at the jail. So we appreciate all the hard work that they're doing. On the Corrections Professional Week, again, over 16,000 folks processed into a 415-bed facility, quite a bit of traffic on a daily basis, but they did a great job with those numbers last year. Couple of programs on the horizon you may be familiar with, some pre-trial services programs that were, uh, a couple of physicians that were funded for this upcoming fiscal year. We're hoping we'll actually slow some of that traffic at the front door down a little bit with our partners in the field and other police agencies in this jurisdiction. Last year, we also processed, um, we received over 13,000 hours of program time in that custody facility for the 415 residents. And that's a direct reflection of the program volunteers, our partnership with our Community Corrections Division. Um, they were, last year, we successfully implemented a motivation class to get folks ready for treatment that they may need. And this year, we hope to launch a cognitive class in the jail as well, so our program hours look like they're gonna be going up on a regular basis. So that's the busyness that is our jail at the moment. Uh, there's many other programs and many other activities going on, but those are some of the highlights that I wanted to cover today, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the record. My name's Eric Ladd. I'm the commander of the Enforcement Division for Sheriff Myers, and thank you for allowing me to talk for a few minutes about National Police Week and to recognize the work of our law enforcement officers in Marion County. Yesterday, law enforcement, yesterday, the Oregon Law Enforcement Memorial Ceremony was held at Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. During the ceremony, names of all Oregon law enforcement officers lost in the line of duty were recited. In 2007, our office lost Deputy Kellen Fredenberg, and his name can be found on the memorial wall. Kelly will forever be remembered as a part of our family. I want to take a moment to highlight, uh, the work of one deputy in particular, Tyler Morrow, who came to us actually from the jail. He served at the jail from 2013 to 2017. Uh, just a few weeks ago, uh, Tyler responded to a, a report from a resident of a three-year-old boy, uh, walking on the sidewalk in the Four Corners area at 10 o'clock at night. Uh, in fact, a couple, uh, three other deputies responded with him. They spoke with Hunter, little three-year-old, took him to Wendy's, got him a sandwich, uh, and in the course of the conversation, uh, as they were getting information from Hunter about where he might live, Hunter started making noises of a loud truck that his dad owned. where he might live, Hunter started making noises of a loud truck that his dad owned. This sparked the memory of Tyler, who recalled going out to a house a couple of months prior, a house where there was a loud truck and some kids in the neighborhood nearby. So on a hunch, Tyler drove over to that house, found a dad frantically pacing on his cellphone. It's, it's that kind of work by our folks in the community, it's the, the community engagement and residents being willing to call us that helps keep our kids safe here in Marion County. So we just want to commend Tyler for, for his great work and, and just acting on that hunch. So in closing, I would ask that Marion County designate the week of May 13th to May 19th, 2018, as Police Recognition Week. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for bringing both of these forward. I know we do this every year and it is very important that we recognize the people that are responsible for making sure that our community is safe and do such heroic work all of the time, unsung heroes really, in our community. So thank you for those stories too, those were really compelling stories. Any questions or comments?
Take them individually.
Yeah, I think, yeah, they're separate items on the agenda, so I think we probably want two separate motions, but we could maybe do the, you want to do a motion and then read and then a motion and then read?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, let's do that then. So Commissioner Brantano, I think you're the first. Oh, did you do the Older Americans one? I missed out on that.
No, I did.
No, it doesn't, so you're...
I did, I did. You did the consent.
Yeah.
And then I did it.
Oh, fine.
Hey, I'll take it from you.
All right. Why don't you make the motion?
What, could I?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, sorry. We have these little notes, can't even keep it either or. I would like to make a motion that we do approve a proclamation that recognizes May 2000, uh, May 6th through 12th, 2018 as Corrections Professional and Nurses Appreciation Week in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for Corrections Professionals and Nurses Appreciation Week in Marion County. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 That's approved. So let's read that proclamation.
And I know where the confusion came in. You started to read the proclamation and I was lost, right? So I'll read this one, huh?
You get to go first, yes.
In a matter of proclaiming the week of May 6th through the 12th, 2018, National Corrections Professionals and Nurses Recognition Week. This matter came before the Board of, Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, May 9th, proclaim the week of May 6th through the 12th as Corrections Professionals and Nurses Recognition Week. Whereas the members of the Institution's Division at the Marion County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights of the citizens of Marion County, and...
Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the Corrections Professionals and nurses, and that members of our Sheriff's Office recognize their duties to serve the people by safeguarding life and property and by protecting individuals against violence and disorder, and by maintaining the highest standards of correctional operations services, and...
Whereas the members of the Institution's Division of the Marion County Sheriff's Office unceasingly provide a vital public service. Therefore, the Board, in gratitude for the dedicated public service and sacrifice, issues the following proclamation. It is hereby proclaimed by the Marion County Board of Commissioners that the week of May 6th through May 12th, 2018 shall be designated as Corrections Professionals and Nurses Recognition Week. And so now a motion, Commissioner Cameron, on the National Police Recognition Week.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a proclamation designated May 13th through the 19th, 2018, as National Police Recognition Week in Marion County.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 That is approved. And let's go ahead and read, and let's see, Commissioner Brantano, how about if you start?
Wonderful. In a matter of proclaiming the week of May 13th to 19th, 2018, as Police Recognition Week, proclamation, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on Wednesday, May 9th, 2018, to proclaim the week of May 13th through 19th, 2018, as Police Recognition Week. Whereas the week of May 13th through 19th has been declared National Police Week, and...
Whereas all members of law enforcement agencies within Marion County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement professionals, and that members of our Sheriff's Office recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life, property, and by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by shielding the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and...
Whereas the women and men of the Marion County Sheriff's Office unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners, in gratitude for the dedicated public service and sacrifice, hereby proclaims the week of May 13th through 19th, 2018, as Police Recognition Week in Marion County. So that is done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you for your support.
Quick question. Usually have a dinner inside the, our jail to show appreciation, have you, have you scheduled that this year?
Actually, we have, we had it yesterday for yesterday's team and then Thursday at 11:30 in the morning and 8:30 at night for the other team.
Tomorrow?
Yes. And next week, we'll do the same thing for Patrol.
So I think Commissioner Cameron's looking for food.
Yeah.
No. Well, if I'd have known this.
No, I like to go out and say hello and thank them, so I'll look at, and if you can give me the ones for next week, but I'll look at my schedule for tomorrow night.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I know you'll be back for an item here in a few minutes. So we have two public hearings noticed at 9:30, it's well past 9:30, so let's open the first public hearing under Public Works. This is a public hearing to consider zone change comprehensive plan ZCCP case number 17-004 Helm, and we have Joe Fenimore here. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is a request to change the comprehensive plan designation from primary agriculture to farm timber and change the zone from exclusive farm use to farm timber on 53 acres of land in the 16,200 block of Emerald Green Lane, southeast in Jefferson. The property is undeveloped and generally well-stocked in timber. Properties to the north, west, and south are zoned EFU and in various types of farm use. Land to the east is zoned acreage residential and contains rural residences on acreage lots. The hearings officer held a public hearing on the request on November 29th, 2017, and on a March 6th issued a recommendation that the Board grant the request. All comprehensive plan amendments must be consistent with statewide planning goals. In order to evaluate the proposal against goal four forest lands, the hearings officer looked at the description of the farm timber designation and after a detailed analysis concluded that based on the use of the property, the soils, the size, the topography, that the site shares sufficient characteristics to allow that farm timber designation. In addition, practical restrictions on the property do make it wholly, on the property is not wholly productive solely for farm use or solely for forest use. The hearings officer concluded that, that soils three and four are both met and a goal exception would not be required in this case. The hearings officer then reviewed again the request against the applicable comprehensive plan policies in finding nine being on page nine, 13 of the recommendation, and the zone change criteria in finding 11 being on page 15 of the, of the recommendation, and concluded that they are satisfied and recommends the Board approve the request. The Board has the option of continuing the public hearing, close the hearing and leave the record open, close the hearing and approve, modify, or deny the request, or remand the matter back to the hearings officer. And once again, the hearings officer recommended approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do, and Joe, it isn't really probably relevant, but I read through it, all conditions met, everything seems fine, but I never could figure out the purpose. What, what's to be accomplished by doing this?
The farm timber zone is a, is a farm forest mix, and it allows, if a property is in, primarily in timber production or forest use, it's easier to get a dwelling.
Right.
Based on that.
Okay.
You don't have to meet, you don't have to do the farm in time and meet the...
But I thought I saw the 80 acres still required and this wouldn't make that at 53.
The 80 acre is not, is not a requirement size for a dwelling. That's, that's the minimum lot size for creating a new parcel.
Okay, okay. Still confused on these things sometimes.
There's quite a bit more options in the, in the timber zone.
Bottom line, if the zone change, they could put a dwelling on the...
If they can meet the requirements.
Fine, right. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward. So we have one person signed up, Norman Bickel.
Well...
Thank you for being here today. Hope you enjoyed the first hour of the meeting and glad that you're finally getting to come to the table.
Genius. My name is Norman Bickel. I'm here on, on behalf of Elizabeth Helms and her family, and we have had an opportunity to review the file from the hearings officer, and we find that the conclusions and the recommendation for approval all fit within what we're trying to accomplish here. And I guess, I don't have much to add to the file, the file is very complete, and if there are questions, be happy to answer them.
Don't have any questions.
No, it's good, things turn out...
It's the beauty of having the hearings officer go through and say, yes, yes, yes.
Yes, it helps a lot.
Makes it pretty easy for us, so...
Right.
So thank you for being here, and I think that's it, yeah.
Yeah, good.
All right. Did anyone come and not have a chance to sign up on this particular matter? Okay, Joe, you're coming back. Any questions for Joe?
I don't.
All right, so we'd be looking for a motion to close the public hearing and...
All right, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to close the public hearing and approve zone change for comprehensive plan ZCCP case 17004 Helm.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and to approve the request for a zone change in this case. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That's approved.
Thank you.
Last item on our agenda, and we will open a public hearing under the Sheriff's Office. This is to consider adding law enforcement services as an additional service provided by the East Salem Service District, and we'll start out with Sheriff Jason Myers and Scott Norris from Legal Counsel. Good morning, again.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jason Myers, I'm your sheriff. We are here today to talk about a East Salem Enhanced Public Safety District. I'm going to talk about a little bit of background information and the need, and then Scott's going to talk a little bit about process. So we are talking about East Salem, which is an area identified on this map in the light green. It's the areas geographically around Schmeckah Community College, which would be the Hayesville area, and then the other areas geographically around State and Lancaster, the Four Corners area. On the map, they're highlighted in, in the light green color. Both of these areas combined equal about five and a half square miles, which represents about a half a percent of the total area in Marion County. And Marion County, as you know, is 1,194 square miles. Fifty-four percent of our calls for service come out of this 5.59 square mile area. So literally, one out of every two calls for the Sheriff's Office comes from this We have seen a dramatic increase, and this probably is no surprise, in the amount of calls in this area. It, this, this bar chart really kind of illustrates the increase in calls. When we look at our county geographically, south, north and south, north would be the Woodburn area, pretty much everything north of Brooks and east out to Silverton. South County would be Jefferson and then up the canyon. Those calls have really remained fairly static in terms of over year, over year. It's, the increase has been really in that East Salem and Central District area. So it's important for me to, to point out a couple of things and how services compare in our county. I'm going to start first with the City of Salem, because it's the largest law enforcement agency in, in the county. They have about 11.4 officers per 10,000 residents, and they police approximately 48 square miles. Kaiser, which would be a good equivalency to that East Salem area in terms of population, Kaiser has 10.7 officers per 10,000 residents, and they have about seven square miles. And for us at the Sheriff's Office, we have about 8.4 deputies per 10,000, yet we police almost 1,200 square miles. So you can see, we have a lower deputies or officers per thousand, but we have a huge geographic area to cover. And that hopefully kind of points out and illustrates how hard our people work to keep the community safe. Over time, our population has continued to grow, and the population chart that I'm referencing is the areas that we are responsible for policing, were over 100,000 folks. Our patrol deputies have really kind of remained static, although the Board has placed a high priority on public safety. I know it's 78% of the general fund. I know that the general fund just kind of keeps up with current costs, and we really have not been able to add other than maybe one or two deputy positions over the last couple of years, yet our population is increasing, and the calls for service, which is the lower left-hand chart, are increasing and our response times are increasing because of the demand for service. One of the things I've included in this chart is discretionary time. I think that's very important for you to know. Discretionary time is the time that deputies can put forward to follow up on investigations, to work on community livability concerns. Our discretionary time has gone down, obviously, because the calls for service are going up, the population is increasing, and that discretionary time is very important in the problem-solving aspects. It's not that our folks don't want to do that, they're just inundated with calls and responding to community concerns, 911 calls, traffic crashes, and those kinds of things. So what we're looking at is a enhanced district for that geographic area that I initially explained, where the vast majority of our calls are coming from. What this would entail is a $10 per month fee per household, per apartment, and per acre for commercial properties. This fee would provide for 10 deputy positions that would be exclusive to that, that particular area, that East Salem area. So it would be an enhancement to our patrol staff. I think it's important to point out that we would not reduce any patrol general fund positions. This would be an enhancement, and these deputies would work in conjunction with the other deputies, but they would be specific to the East Salem area of Hayesville and Four Corners. Just so you know, in terms of staffing, it, it takes, to staff a position or a post, it takes five deputy positions to staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. That's because of the shifts that we have, vacation, training, sick time. It takes five positions for one post. Our thought here is to have five deputies assigned to the Hayesville area, which would equate to a deputy being available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and then five deputies dedicated to the Four Corners area, again, covering 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. This would be in addition to the deputies that we already have that are working patrol. So these would be enhanced and really overlaid in those communities. One of the questions that's come up in the town hall meetings, and this is a really good question, about what does a resident of the City of Salem pay in terms of taxes, and what does a resident in East Salem pay in terms of taxes? And so with the help of the Assessor's Office, we have this slide that really helps illustrate that. If you live in the City of Salem, your, your total tax rate is $18.46. If you live in East Salem, that area that I've identified, Hayesville and Four Corners, your tax rate is actually $14.16. Some example properties to compare, what we try to do is find two as close as possible examples of houses, both in terms of the year they're built and square footage. On the left, a home on 31st Avenue, built in 1977, it's just a little under 1,300 square feet. That would be in the City of Salem, though that tax rate is about $2,600, almost $2,700 a year. An identical house in the county, built in 1977, roughly 1,300 square feet, that tax rate is $2,160. So there's about a $500 a year difference that the East Salem residents pay less than a, than somebody that lives in the city. Again, we found two houses that are a little bit newer, built in the 2000s, roughly the same square footage, and there's about a $600 difference that a city resident pays $600 more than a county resident with a similar house. So...
Sheriff?
Yes?
And that would be before the $10 added on, so you'd figure another $120 and they're still below, significantly below.
Still well below, yeah. It would be another, if this passed, it would be additional $120, it would be still well below what the City of Salem pays.
Just wanted to...
Sure.
Close the logic loop there.
Yeah. Yeah. One of the things we found a great success with at our office is geographic deployment. It's been through our contract cities and a couple of positions that we have been able to add over the last couple of fiscal years. One in the East County area, up the canyon, and one in the North County area. The benefit of having folks geographically assigned is that they take ownership over the community, and so that's our vision with this East Salem district. I talked about it a little bit earlier, that we would have one deputy position or post in the Hayesville area. That's the five deputies that would work exclusively to that area. We'd mark our cars to identify that those are the Hayesville area deputies. What we found is when we geographically assign folks, they're able to better deal with the livability and quality of life issues within that geographic area. They take ownership over the area, and they work together with the community and really address concerns. And that's one of the things we've heard from East Salem, is there's been issues around graffiti, there's been issues around car thefts, there's been quality of life issues. And it's not that our deputies don't care, but as I illustrated earlier, they are so busy with just the calls for service that this enhancement allows us the ability to reduce our response time to calls, but then have dedicated individuals that really can focus on the livability concerns in the community, because they are geographically assigned to that area. Again, this is just another example for the Four Corners area. Again, the vehicle marked to identify that this is, you know, the deputy assigned to that geographic area. I've touched a little bit on it, but there's tremendous benefits with that geographic assignment, that community policing assignment. And really, the focus is the focus on livability and addressing livability concerns, working together with the community and community engagement. We think it's really, really important that when we work together with the community to address concerns, that we have a better outcome, and we have better buy-in. Public safety, we have a high responsibility as members of the sheriff's office, but really at the end of the day, it's all of our responsibility. And we can work together collaboratively, that's when some of the best work happens. And we have demonstrated that over the years. Working together to build safer communities, being proactive, actually being able to not just respond to calls, but actually follow up, follow through, and maybe get ahead of those issues when we know they're coming, and implement strategies that help keep the community safe. An emphasis on quality, I think we all share that at the sheriff's office, but when we have the time and the ability and the focus, we can really do a great job of following through on the things that the community wants us to do. It's not that our people don't want to do that, but when you're going to emergency call to emergency call, or priority call to priority call, it makes it difficult, especially with the geographic area that we have to cover. Because East Salem is not the only area we cover. We cover all of the small communities, all of the rural areas, all the way up to Aurora, all the way south to Jefferson, all the way east to Detroit and Idana. And each community has specific and unique needs that they need out of their public safety organization. And then finally, our dedication to our communities and neighborhoods, I really believe that this enhanced district is the answer to being able to address those concerns that have been brought forward to me. So, I strongly, strongly support this. I think it's the right thing to do for our entire county, but in particular, this community that has grown and is going to continue to grow, and really has needs from the sheriff's office in terms of public safety. With that, I will turn it over to Scott to talk a little more about the process.
Good morning Commissioners, I am Scott Norris from the Office of Legal Counsel. Before you today is a public hearing, the first public hearing, on the addition of law enforcement services to the East Salem Service District. The purpose of today's hearing is for the board to determine whether the territory of East Salem Service District will be benefited by the addition of law enforcement services. If the board concludes that the district will be benefited by the addition of law enforcement services, next week we'll come back to you with an order of the board scheduling a second public hearing, which at this point would be tentatively scheduled for June 6th, after which the board may issue an order formally adding law enforcement services to East Salem Service District. And if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
So, I do have a question, and it kind of came through on some of the emails that we got. So, could one of you walk through kind of the decision process on the different options that you went through, like, so why didn't we decide to just go out for a levy where everybody voted on it? I think we looked at, why didn't we do a larger area, like all of Marion County, as opposed to this area? Could we just kind of talk about that briefly?
Yeah, it's a really good question, and we have had a lot of dialogue and conversation around it. I think at the end of the day, where the greatest demand is that's pulling the resources is in this East Salem area. So, well, we've continued to see the growth in that area, in both residences and apartments. If you took the population of Hayesville and Four Corners, it would be equal to the size of the City of Kaiser. That, in addition to the number of calls, pulls all of our resources in to that area oftentimes, and we aren't able to get out to the outlying areas, Scott's Mills, Aurora, Detroit, Idana, because all our resources are being pulled to that area. So, we believe that this is the right thing to do. Because of that increase in need for police services, it helps to focus in those areas. It helps us to address the concerns that have been brought forward by residents in that area, and it provides a little relief so that the general fund deputies can support the activity in the East Salem area, but at the same time, give a fair policing of the outlying areas as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we open it up?
Just to follow up on the, thank you Madam Chair, to follow up on the sheriff's comment, the fact that this is an urban area versus a rural area, and I think the description of having, you know, marked cars that are community, more community policing in this particular area versus other rural parts, it's totally a different, you can describe it as a professional better than I could, but it's a totally different type of policing to, instead of being reactionary, we need to be preventive. And we know from other models that when you have, when I go to a neighborhood association meeting, that, for example, the City of Salem police officer shows up and talks about what's going on there, or you go to a city that has a police force, they show up and talk about what's going on in those communities. And I think that there'll be ownership by the citizens, et cetera, in this particular area, because it is a city. It really is acting like a city in many ways.
Not right now.
All right. So, before we call up the people that have signed up to testify, and I've waited a very long time, I wanted to read into the record, Kristy provided us with copies of emails that were sent, people who may not be able to come today. So, the first set are those who wrote in favor. This would be Lisa DeBrykier and her husband George Buckner, who emailed in support. Tom Kerrigan, a resident of Four Corners, says he's in favor. Todd Call, who's the owner of the Phoenix Investment Group, also said that he is in favors, expressed an opinion that $50 for business would be appropriate. And then Kevin McGlorry, who...
Is here.
Is here, all right. Sent an email in favor with a number of arguments, and I won't read your email here, so that you have a chance to express that. Did you sign up to testify, by the way?
I did know the proper procedure, I just wanted to make sure comments were considered. I can do both.
Okay, if you'd like to, we can just add you to the list, so, all right. Do you have a copy of your email? Do you want to?
Well, I've got it.
You got it in your head, all right, good. All right. And then we have Lisa Randalls, who wrote in opposition, was concerned about fixed income residents, and whether people can afford the increase. Lori Shaw, who was concerned about applying the tax to all of Marion County, reducing the amount to each, which is why I asked the question that I asked. And Robert Wolf, who believes that we should do this within current revenues, and is on fixed income. So, those are read into the record, and then we will go ahead and call the people who signed up. So, we'll start with Glenn Rader. Okay, there you are. Morning, thank you for coming.
Madam Chair and members of the Marion County Commission, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is Glenn Rader. I live on Ward Drive, which is within the Hayesville area. But I'm also the chairman of the Marion County Sheriff's Citizens Advisory Committee, which has been formed several years ago, and consists of members from throughout the entire county, from the Aurora Broad Acres area in the north, to the Jefferson area in the south, to up as far as Detroit, to the east, and also from both Hayesville and Four Corners area. We have members from Silverton and State and throughout the county. And we took a long look at this several weeks ago, and unanimously, every one of the members voted in support of this issue. Now, personally, I live on Ward Drive, and we have, within our community out there, traffic concerns. They put the road between Corden Road and Lancaster, all the way through, clear down to the freeway. And it seems to be coming a freeway sometimes. We are having an increase in car thefts, break-ins, and I know that the sheriff's office has been very responsive to all the times that people call. However, every time that they have to divert a deputy from going to the Detroit area, or from going to the Silverton or State area, which is just as important to bring them back to the Hayesville area, is not right. Now, the five officers that will be assigned to the Hayesville area and the Four Corners area, it's my understanding, these are going to be the same officers all the time. They're not going to bring in one day a certain officer or someone else. It gives that officer an opportunity to get to know the residents of that community. It also gets them to have a very unique understanding of the issues within that area. And from everyone I've talked to, the only criticism I've heard is, why can we not vote on it? And even though they're not voting on it, they still support the issue. $10 a month is a very nominal fee, in most people's thoughts, for this type of protection. And I commend Sheriff Myers in all that he does within this county. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
Thanks for the testimony.
Appreciate your testimony. Thank you for being here and for waiting through all the other items to give your testimony. Michael Johnson from ESTA. And Michael Brickley, do you want to come up at the same time? Are you two, both from ESTA, right?
Yes, Michael Johnson from the East Salem Service District. This is not the first time you've seen us here talking about safety issues.
And Michael Brickley, and the current chair for the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association?
I say Service District, shame on me. Suburban Neighborhood Association, yes. As a neighborhood association, we were formed in 1996 for a number of reasons, but one, to bring us together. But ever since it was formed, the neighborhood association has been here from time to time talking about very safety issues. We came to you in March of 2013, upstairs, in a conference, and the sheriff was there, as were a number of other county officials. And although we didn't say policing, you know, specifically, we talked about safety issues as being the number one issue that is on the neighborhood. It's on the minds of the neighborhood. It's when they come to us and sit in our meetings, they talk to us about safety. When they email us, they are talking about safety, whether it be speeding down the street, whether it be break-ins, whether it be streetlights, be it any other kind of activity, it's all under the umbrella of safety. As a neighborhood association, I think we can say we heartily support the acquisition of officers for the area. The one question I would have is, because this is under the auspices of the East Salem Service District, the East Salem Service District has boundaries, would the same rules apply that if you need help on the 5200 block of State Street, are you going to pull the service officer from Four Corners to go two blocks further outside the boundary? And I think the answer is going to be yes, but I want you to, it's a question I'd like to have explained.
Would you like me to answer that, Commissioner?
Sure.
The short answer is, if it's an emergency, yes. We work collaboratively, both within our organization, as well as with the other law enforcement agencies. The primary emphasis of those deputies will be those communities. So, if there's an emergency, let's just say, that happens two blocks outside of the Service District, and they're the closest car, I think everybody would expect them to respond and deal with it. The thing that will happen, though, is that they'll be relieved, and they'll be able to go back to their district. So, they'll be there to take care of the emergency on the onset, but they'll be relieved by other deputies if it's an elongated investigation.
And the other question I would have is, on the population outside the Service District up to, say, Hal Prairie. I know down in the Four Corners area, that I know that there's a good deal of population in that area from Highway 22 to Sunnyview, and Hal Prairie Road to Corden Road. I'm not so sure what the population density is once we go north of Silverton Road. My guess is, though, it's less. Has there been any discussion for the future of expanding the service from outside the immediate Service District area to include the higher density, even though it's lower than the actual suburban area, to expand that area out into the, further out, say to Hal Prairie Road, and then apply those costs over a broader group of people?
Is that something you're looking for an answer for as well?
Hasn't been considered, and if so, how much, and is it a future, or could it be a future discussion?
Sheriff, do you want to?
Sure. So, we've really looked at where the concentrated population is in the existing Service District. Could it be a future conversation? Absolutely. But what we're bringing forward today is where the lion's share of our calls and the need is. That's the area that we're looking at. So, that conversation could always be in the future.
And the neighborhood has been so excited. There are people that are volunteering in the heart of Four Corners. They've already said, you can have your office here, and it's right on State Street, right in the middle between Lancaster and Corden Road. They are so excited about doing it.
And I would assume, I was thinking as the sheriff was making his presentation, that because there's the dedicated staff, you will have a regular participant right at the neighborhood association meetings, just like they do with the City of Salem, that will listen to... will listen to neighborhood concerns and follow up on them? Is that correct, Sheriff?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. That is, our plan is to be engaged in those community meetings, number one. And number two, I neglected my presentation. We've already had some informal conversations. Nothing's obviously been decided on this, but looking at a substation on State Street around the 45th Avenue area, where we've had, we've been approached by a church there that has some vacant property that is interested also with the Shemekka Community College for the Hayesville area. So we want those deputies to have office space in the community. It's very advantageous to have those kind of ongoing dialogue and interaction with community members, so we get the pulse of what's going on.
Great.
So the long term truth is, is that the East Salem Neighborhood Association, by its actions and by its words, over 22 years, supports the increase of Sheriff's Officers in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Michael Brickley, anything to add?
No, no further to add, so.
All right, very good. Any questions?
Just thank you for your support and all you do. And you talk about public safety, Michael, and I know the lighting districts, all that's a part of public safety and making those neighborhoods better, so thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Greg Leo, that's next. Who also serves on the Marion County Sheriff's Citizen Advisory Committee and on the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council.
Thank you very much, Sheriff Carlson, members of the Marion County Commission. For the record, my name is Greg Leo. I live at 9318 Shempuig Road in North County. Appreciate seeing you up there last week for the commission meeting, celebrating our 175th year as a county. I'm speaking today in strong support of the East Salem Service District. This is a good idea. It's an idea which will benefit citizens from all over the county. But I want to point out a couple of advantages here that this very creative, innovative approach brings. First of all, and most importantly, I think, it puts additional resources in play for the law enforcement needs of our county. And our sheriffs do a great job, but they are stretched thin, all the way from where I am, up in Aurora, out, you know, the canyon, and throughout the county. And to hear that 54% of the law enforcement calls happen in this one geographic area points, I think, in very stark relief, the need for additional resources in this part of East Salem. This proposal provides those resources, and that's excellent. Second, the sheriff made some comments about community, see, geographically assigned community officers. We have an excellent officer of this type, Todd Bay, up in the north Marion County area. We call him our French Prairie Deputy. And I believe this creates a model for this kind of community policing, and I just wanted to talk for a minute about the benefits of this model. Todd Bay knows us. He meets with us in our community meetings. We see a lot of him, and we have developed a trust relationship between our community deputy and the people. It's really a two-way street. We have his cell phone number. When we see something we don't like, we can give Todd a call. Todd then gets right on the situation, and then he has this important factor of discretionary time to be able to develop information about a law enforcement concern for the community. And I'll give an example. We recently had a burglary in the Butteville area that Todd had the time to run down specific facts, found, we believe, you know, a person who is the perpetrator, and was able to actually close a case that otherwise might not have been closed. So this important use of discretionary time allows our community officers really to address the problems that our community faces in real time. So by using these geographically, specific geographic officers, sheriffs, to be able to address those law enforcement problems, I think really is a high standard for community policing and does a great job. The East Salem Service District proposal provides the resources and the community orientation in order to live into that promise. So I urge you in the strongest possible terms today to support this. It is a creative, effective way of putting the resources and the community officers where they are needed in order to meet the growing law enforcement needs of Marion County. So I urge you, yes vote.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Your testimony and all your service on behalf of Marion County.
Where my volunteer button did it?
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Kevin McGory. And is there anyone else who did not sign up who came here to testify? Okay, great.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kevin McGory. I've been living in Four Corners for 37 years in the same house, and they'll cart me out of that house one day, so I have a very vested interest in this community. I have seen it go from quasi-country to very definitely urban. I have been to the Houck and the Shemekka Town Halls. I'm here because I'm very selfish. I like my house. I like my livability. I like the quality of life. But when I go and I look at the facts and I hear from the sheriff that 54% of all the calls are coming from my neighborhood, and I have 35% less protection and safety than two blocks away, it is truly an urban area, and it needs to be addressed. Other districts I have heard come and talk, they were actually at Houck, two of the Service Districts that now have contracts. Overwhelmingly positive feedback, because this actually allows, in a county environment, which is really urban, for us to have community policing. You heard earlier today the story of Deputy Tyler, because they knew something. The same five deputies in the same area not only allows better emergent response, it allows for medium and long-term problems. How many other Officer Tyler stories would there be when the policeman knows the community? And I look at the cost-benefit analysis. I pay a lot of taxes and fees in my life, federal, state, county, you name it. I don't have in the forefront of my mind a single tax or fee that is more cost-effective to me personally. Thirty-three cents a day. I get a policeman in my neighborhood 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including Christmas. I get the same policeman. I get a vehicle for four corners on it. I've been to the meetings. We're going to have two additional substations. This $10 doesn't go to a general fund that then gets split up by somebody deciding it. This fee goes from me to me, for me. So yes, I'm selfish. It's going to improve my livability. Ultimately, it's going to improve my property values. So there's a lot of things that are to be taken into account there. We're playing catch-up now through discussions with the Sheriff's Office. It's going to take a year and a half to two years to recruit and staff. We got Amazon coming in there with over 1,000 employees. There's 1,000 more trips a day on the freeway, on Corden Road. And that's just Amazon. That whole area is just blowing up. Every time you bat an eye, there's a, there's a new apartment complex going up. I realize that 33 cents a day, to some people, is a lot of money. I realize there are fixed incomes. But I also realize that public safety is the core of everything. If, we need to help the sheriff help us. And the issue about voting, like Michael said, even those who might want to see, I can't remember who said, might want to vote on it, but they're still in favor of it. Well, I want to thank the sheriff. I want to thank the Commissioners here today for their leadership. We, as a collective, have elected our leaders as a representative form of government. I trust that you know a lot more about these issues than I do. You're exposed to them day in and day out. Everything doesn't have to be voted on by every single person. I thank you for your leadership. I thank you for taking the initiative to putting the resources where we need them itemized, right there in our communities where the growth is at. And I strongly consider any other districts to be funded in the same way. And I'll be happy to come back here a year and a half, in two years, three years from now, and tell you exactly how it has improved the lives of our community. And maybe how many other three-year-olds, how many other Deputy Tyler stories can be written over the next five years after this happens? Because community policing works. We can't just respond to every fire. We have to be proactive. This allows the Sheriff's Office to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, just, I apologize for not recognizing you for a moment, but I had to look twice as soon as I heard the name. But if you remember, Kevin used to join us in the Woodburn meetings and Woodburn Post Office, and thank you for coming in.
Yes. Thank you. All right, so no one else wanted to testify? Okay, so any further comments from the sheriff or legal counsel?
One thing I would add is, as I had mentioned earlier, this is a public hearing. If the Board does decide that the district would be benefited by the addition of law enforcement services, we will come back to you next week with an order scheduling the second public hearing, which would be, at this point, set for June 6th at 9:30.
Very good. So this is the first, so we're required to have the two public hearings. This is the first required public hearing. Well, the second one on June 6th. So today, we're just going to close the public hearing and not actually vote on the fee.
That's correct.
Madam Chair, may I just clarify what legal counsel just said, that just because we are closing the public hearing and scheduling another one, doesn't mean we've made any decision at this point in time. We just are going to go through the next step in the process.
That is correct. The next, the next step would be issuing an order scheduling the second public hearing, and then after that second public hearing, the Board would be ultimately voting on whether to add the service to the district.
Thank you. So.
Madam Chair, Scott, I, I heard you say that we were supposed to decide that there was benefit for the district. How do we make that determination, then? Do we state it in a final order, or not need to be done today?
That is correct. It would be, yeah, that is correct. It would be in the order that would be coming back to the Board next week.
Need a motion to close the public hearing?
I had one other comment, if I could.
Yes.
I don't know. I don't know how this goes on forever, and if we review it, or it ever comes if it sunsets, and it should, but I picture that it does, because I think the need's going to be there always. But I would like there to be some, some type of check-in with the community, an annual kind of report on, on the benefits of it, to make sure that it's still valid into the future. So if you could build that in, I'd enjoy that.
Yeah, I think that question has been asked in some of the town halls, so that once, if the fee is approved, it is $10 and it goes into the future. We've, so to answer maybe part one of your question, we've looked at it over a three-year period. That fee for, based on the houses and apartments and commercial properties we have now, we believe we can fully fund this for three years. We, I think it's important that we do check in, and I'm happy to do that on a yearly basis, to provide updates on where it's at and where we're going. I think it's important. We need to do that in the community as well, you know, at these East Suburban meetings, as well as any other community meetings, to give updates. We do that with our contract cities. I see this very similarly. One of the ideas is, we would probably have a webpage that people could access information to find out what the deputies are doing, what they're seeing, what kind of calls they're going to. I would envision doing something like that as well, because we think it's important to give that information and feedback to those that are paying for that service, so they see what they're getting.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions before we close the public hearing?
Yeah, just, I just struck up another thought or question, I guess, in my mind, is, and maybe this is for counsel. We have public, we have Service Districts in other places that have a governing body, a budget, that shows transparency, what's going on there. Will this be, and I hope this would be, since it is a Service District, is this going to be a transparent budget that, that we would be able to look at, the income, the expenses, et cetera, through the Sheriff's Office?
Do you want me to answer that one?
Talk about transparency.
Absolutely. It will, this will be its own, it will have its own fund number, so we'll be able to see revenue and how we budget for all of the positions, and that, once approved, will roll forward to the future.
Great.
And one thing I, I'd point out as well, Commissioner, is the process that we're going through right now is to add law enforcement services to the district. The, the actual creation of the fee would be an action of the governing body of the district after the service is added to the district.
Great. Thank you. So, Madam Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing today on East Salem Service, East Salem Public Safety Service District.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it is closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank all everyone for coming and for your presentation. So that concludes our business. I will read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings where two or three Commissioners will be present during the week of May 9th through May 16th. We're just concluding our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room at 1:00. We have a Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officers meeting with an executive session pursuant to ORS 192662H. That will be held in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Tomorrow morning, May 10th, Thursday, 7:30 in the morning, is our monthly meeting with Kaiser officials at Sherry's Restaurant, 4998 River Road North in Kaiser. That'll be followed at 10 by the Budget Committee meeting for the Marion County Extension and 4-H District, held in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Then on Monday, May 14th, we have the Association of Oregon County Steering Committees Legislative Committee and Board meeting. That happens between 8:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. at the Local Government Center, 1201 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Monday, May 14th, from, no, it's supposed to be Tuesday, May 15th. Sorry. So that's an error on our calendar. At 9:30 a.m. is the calendar review at the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. That'll be followed at 10:00 by a Service District's Budget Meeting in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Then at 11:30 will be.
Excuse us, we're still in session here.
A Marion County Reentry Initiative Planning Meeting in the Silverton Conference Room here in Salem. And then at 1:30, we will have a work session on Health and Human Services Triennial Review and Oregon Health Authority. That will be in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Wednesday, May 16th, at 9:00 a.m., we will be back in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday board session. And I'll note that it's also the stepping up day of action, so we'll be having a special presentation next Wednesday on that. At noon, May 16th, is our Mid Valley Jobs Council Meeting, from noon to 2:30. And then at 4:00 on Wednesday, May 16th, is the grand opening of the St. Monica Apartments. That will be at 171 Apple Blossom Avenue North in Kaiser. And at 6:00 on May 16th, will be the Salvation Army Volunteer Appreciation Event at the Crox Center, 1865 Bill Fry Drive Northeast in Salem. So a long calendar, and I note that we all have meetings that aren't on this calendar, but only one Commissioner's going to, so busy week coming up.
Yeah, it's interesting, Commissioner, madam, I'm sure that you said you were, I think in front of Willamette students, and you read off, or you showed them your calendar of all the boards and commissions and everything you belong to, and they said, oh, that's interesting, you did those things all over many years, and you said to them, no, that's what I'm doing right now.
Right, yeah.
We're busy, busy people.
Yeah. Well, I asked them, so what, when you look at this, what do you think? And a guy just said, well, surely, these are the ones you've done over time. These wouldn't be, you wouldn't be doing all of these, as they tell us. Actually, I am doing it all at the same time. And they said, well, actually, I am doing all at the same time. And they couldn't leave it. Yeah, it's... But certainly, they are important meetings, as I mentioned, and the ability for us, just like we saw today with the Citizens Advisory Committee and members of the Public Safety Council and the people that participate in ESTA, they inform our work. And when we participate in SCATS and EDAB and Regional Strategies and SEDCOR and all the different things, the Forest Trust Lands that you both do and the things that I do more in mental health and healthcare, are influenced and influences those policies for the good, I think. So that's my soapbox.
Well, I hope so. So you talked about retiring when you pulled the plug on all those activities. Think you'd be bored?
I think being, well, I can tell you that the preview I've had, being a Grammy on all my trips to Boise, I am never bored. I'm usually...
Oh, wonderful.
I usually come back to work feeling like I have a vacation coming back here because it's a lot of work taking care of two little boys that have special needs. Oops, this is the wrong... You don't want us to sign this one, right? Okay. I'll just cross that out.
All right, should we adjourn it, or what else is there?
Anything else to talk about? Looks like not, so we will adjourn.